Good evening. It is 6 o'clock and we're going to go ahead and start. What we usually, what we have been doing in the last, for the last few months is starting off, the first 15 minutes of our council meeting will be open mic. And from 6:00 to 6:15, if you'd like to come and address the council, all we'd have you do is come up to the podium and talk and just like to know who you are. And we can kind of go from there. So if anyone would like to just come up and chat or let us, what you're thinking, come on up to the podium and let's hear what you have to say. So Kathy has, you have something on the Blossom Festival?
Yes, I guess Councilwoman Smith has asked me to go ahead and take the lead on the Blossom Festival Committee. We're going to recognize them this evening for all their efforts, current efforts, past efforts, and future efforts, because I know there's some new board members it looks like onboard too. So just a little bit about the Blossom Festival Committee. For the 20 years, or 19 years that I've been here, we've worked very, this city has worked very close with the Blossom Festival. They come in prior to the event each year. We work with them along with city staff, the county sheriff, the county health official, and I know I will forget somebody, AMR, DOC, all of those folks. We get together prior to the event to make sure that all bases are covered far as the police department, sheriff department for security, the parks department here far as the events and making sure everything goes well, the street department with Tony Falgene and barricades and stuff like that. So tonight, we just wanted to recognize them for their efforts. It took a while to get us, get these guys here. It's a little bit late. We didn't know whether we still wanted to do it or wait till next year, and I said, "We're going to still do it this year." So we're glad that they're here. Some of them, if you guys want to go ahead and come on up, some of them that's here is Cassie Groh, she's the current president, Mike Frye, Lisa Heims, Phil Degarmo, and Holly Harp. And so you can stay at the podium because I'm sure somebody's going to want to say something that I have totally missed, but we just want, council takes this time of the meeting to recognize folks in the community that's made a positive difference and continues to make a positive difference in shedding a good, positive light on our community. So you guys, I want to go ahead and name the whole board. Cassie Groh, Mike Frye, Mike Nolan, Charge of Bands, Kristy Degarmo, Lisa Heims, Amanda Baggett, Phil Degarmo, Ann Gill, Megan McCarter, Greg Dorito, Glenn Ewer, Dawn Adams, Diana Strong, Bruce Gill, Elizabeth Camachi, Camachi?
Camachi.
Crystal Lippas, Tony Lippas, Holly Harp, Nicola Higgins, Jennifer Howard, John Carocci, and John Rigorosi. And so some of those are new to me even, so I commend you for getting some new people on there. I know some people get a little tired after that, they do it years and years and years. So with that, we'll go ahead and hear from you, and then also we have some letters that we'll go ahead and pass out or give to you so you can give to the rest of your folks.
Take it away.
Well, we, on behalf of the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival and our entire board and everyone who's not with us tonight, thank you for showing your appreciation for us. And we could not do this festival without every single one of you sitting up there and every one of these volunteers. It's tireless and a lot of time, and every single person who is on the Blossom Committee Board. The Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Weekend just holds a very special place in each one of our hearts, and we are all volunteers. So thank you for recognizing our sacrifices every single year. And planning is already underway for 2017, so if anybody wants to come on out and join us and help us out, we would appreciate it. Mr. Frye?
You just said all the good stuff. You took every one of the good things. I would add this. I'm one of the people that has been active on the Board for quite some time. And as well as, as having the enjoyment of seeing our community put its best foot forward once a year, which I think is really important, we, we have lots of things we can disagree about, but that weekend seems to be a time when everybody tends to agree on, on most of the major issues at least. That's always fun to watch, and it's fun to watch people having fun. The other thing that's really fun to watch though is the nature of the people who come and go on the Board, every one of them adding their, their own perspectives and their own knowledge and their own interests and passions and loves. And every time I feel so bad because we just lost a member, it's like, no way. It's, it's fine, because wonderful other people join us then, including, we have, we have a proto-member here. She's actually not on the Board, but she's a daughter, and I suspect you'll be hearing more from her probably in the years to come. So as well as that, thank, thank you very sincerely. And all of the, the department heads and the other people that we, that we work with, they are critical and they have made our job easy. Now, maybe not easy, but certainly doable. They, I think, do understand that we are volunteers and make mistakes and aren't as smooth and polished as we ought to be. Whenever we forget something, Kathy and the rest of the staff is quick to step up and make sure that it's, that it's, works out fine in the end, and we very much do appreciate that. So thank you for this time, and we'll expect to see you around May of this year. Okay?
We'd like to invite you to come up. We're going to take a picture with you guys in the city council, and thank you. Every year, the blossom is the highlight of the entire year. We appreciate it.
I was just going to make a statement that the reason that Mike is still with us as a consultant is because he knows that no one ever leaves this Board alive. You know, you don't know where the members have gone. You just don't see them anymore. So yes, we encourage people to join and stay.
Come on up, come on up to the front, please.
Don't always look at me like that.
Hello, the official garb of the Blossom Festival.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and start the regular city council meeting for November 3rd, 2016, October 3rd. It is October, October 2016, and I would like to call it to order right now. And could we have Tom Gilgar of First Baptist Church do the invocation, please? Would you all rise?
This is a prayer that was First Prayer of the United States Senate by Peter Marshall. He's since passed away, so if you don't like his prayer, sorry, he's dead. Let's pray. Our Father bless the leaders of this city, strengthen the courage and representatives of this city and sincere men and women who want to do the right. If only they can be sure of what is right. Make it plain to them, O Lord, and then may they choose to follow the right way. For you know that oftentimes we can be hard-headed. Forgive them for the blunders they have committed, the compromises they have made. Give to them the courage to admit mistakes. Take away from us as a nation and as individuals that stubborn pride which followed by conceit imagines itself to be above and beyond criticism. Save our leaders, O God, from our, from themselves and from their friends, even as you have saved them from their enemies. Let no personal ambition blind them to their opportunities. Help them to give battle to hypocrisy wherever they find it. Give them divine common sense and a selflessness that shall make them think of service and not of gain. May they have the courage to lead the people of this city, considering unworthy the expediency of following the people. Save them from the folly of man-made schemes and plans and give to them the faith and courage together to seek God's inspired plan and finding it, to propose it, knowing then when it is God-inspired that you will open the way for it through all obstacles. As you have made and preserved us a nation, so now mold us into a people more worthy of a great heritage. In your strong name, we make this prayer. Amen. Thank you all.
Would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Smith.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
And Meisner. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Then we'll look for the approval of the minutes for the September 19th and 21st. The September 19th is for the city council meeting, the regular city council meeting, and on the 21st was the Public Works Committee. Are there any corrections at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a slight correction. Under councilmember's announcements, it says that councilmember Smith solicited personal videos, but it's personal input.
Duly noted.
Are there any other corrections? Could I have a motion in a second then? Mr. Weed?
Mayor, members of council, I make the motion to approve the minutes from the 9/19/2016 regular city council meeting and the 9/21/2016 Public Works Committee meeting. As amended.
Ms. Schumacher, second Ms. Schumacher, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any announcements from council this time? Mr. Weed?
Thank you. There is a general government committee meeting this Wednesday, October the 5th. It would be in the room adjoining at 4:00. Got my coach here.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Mr. Meisner?
I'd like to take a minute to at least acknowledge staff and council. We just, on Friday, we had our community agency funding process. Two things, I appreciate Councilman Gill and Councilwoman Schumacher's input and assistance and process and that whole thing in conjunction with city administrator Tony Ewerke and Director of Finance Harry Patel. That whole process went extremely good, and I think it went extremely good because of the new process that we're using that was created by Councilwoman Smith. And I'm going to try to get all these people, Harry Patel, Terry, Cheryl. Jen O'Connor. The whole process, just, I mean, I'm sure we can refine it, but that whole process, in the end, we were able to finalize that decision in probably about 30 minutes, and it was an excellent process, and I congratulate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Thursday is another special city council meeting at 3:00 here at City Hall.
Mayor.
Ms. Smith?
Also want to do, just a reminder, councilmember Scott Ekstrom and Tony, you guys are both on the calendar to talk on the radio this Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning for Carolyn, and I just wanted to make sure you guys are onboard for that together.
Forward to it.
And I also wanted to introduce to you guys my one and only daughter, Hannah Smith, if you don't mind standing up. She just, you've met my five boys, but this is my gem, my daughter Hannah, who's just moved back to the United States from living in Toronto, Canada, for the past 18 months, and serving a mission there with the Hispanic population in Toronto, so we're very happy to have her here.
Welcome. Welcome back.
Welcome home.
We've been watching your mother, so she's been in good hands. She does get wild at times, but maybe.
She doesn't listen well, so.
She leads pretty good. Okay. Any other announcements or comments? We go ahead and to adopt the agenda and consent agenda. Tony, would you review the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mayor and council. Item 4A, we authorize the mayor to execute an access agreement with the Fremont Conservation District to permit access to city property in Dawson Ranch for wildfire mitigation by thinning the trees there. Item 4B would authorize street closure of Main Street from 3rd to 14th on December 3rd from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the Chamber of Commerce Annual Christmas Parade. Item 4C would authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad to improve the existing at-grade wood-timber crossing to be replaced with a new concrete crossing. And 4D would ratify the mayor's signature on a letter of support to the Colorado History Fund for a grant request by the St. Cloud Hotel. And 4E would approve the proposed combination of the city planner's position with the currently vacant community development director position and change the minimum and maximum pay ranges to reflect an increase in responsibility for the newly revised community development director position.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any additions or corrections to that? Mr. Meisner?
Give me a chance to raise my hand.
I knew you were going to.
One, I have a question for John. Item, consent agenda 4B was actually submitted by myself. Is there an issue?
I take it you have no financial interest in this?
No.
There is no issue.
Well, that's difficult, too.
And then additionally, I'm understanding that we need to make a modification to item number nine, which is, not nine, number 11. Which is a change in interest rate from.
3% to 2.5%.
Right. Or 3.5, 3.85 taxable. That one, a change needs to happen to item number 11. And then item number 12, I'm understanding, needs to be removed.
12 and 13.
That item's not completely available or ready?
Well, no way. Wouldn't we do that in, when we ask for a motion? Do you amend that, you amend the motion? Is that what you want to do?
Well, if we're still on the ordinance, what we were referring to is item number 11, that's, that's ordinance number 19. That change can be made at any time prior to introduction, and that way we don't need to amend it.
Okay.
And then the, the next two items that I believe it was going to be suggested we pull from the agenda.
Right.
Aren't quite ready. There are a couple of things we wanted to double-check before, we wanted council to act.
What's your pleasure?
To clarify, we're going to remove item 12 and item 13? And then we'll amend that 11 when we get to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll call for that, because. Second.
You don't, you don't need to wait. You suggested an amendment before the ordinance is introduced, and that's fine, as long as you all treat it as containing the new language, the replacement language, before that process starts.
Can we wait until we get to the ordinance, because it's a first reading? That way it'll be clear?
If it's clear to wait, then wait.
Let's wait till we get to 11, okay? I don't mean to steal your thunder, but, okay? That's what the mayor wants to do. Nobody objected to that.
You can, you can make the motion any way you want.
Yes, you can. Would you want to make the motion now?
Okay. I make a motion that we remove item 13, 12 and 13.
Okay. I was referring to ordinance number 11.
And approve the agenda and consent agenda otherwise.
And approve the, agenda and consent agenda otherwise.
Does everybody understand the motion? Motion being made and seconded, that we have an amendment. We amend the motion as proposed. Any discussion on that motion? I think we've done that.
We state the motion, just to make sure it's clear. He is amending the, the agenda of removing items number 12 and 13, and we have a second on that.
Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Tony, could we have the administrator's report, please?
Two items. Want to thank the council and particularly the community for their engagement in our citizen survey. The mail survey had over 39% respondents, and the online survey had 701 people that responded, so that's really a great reflection on people's interest in engaging and sharing their thoughts about the community. That information is on the city's website. I know the newspapers also are going to do an article, so the data is quite interesting, so hopefully the public will take advantage of that. Also want to recognize all the members and certainly the council members who are serving on the marijuana cultivation committee, which is not for sale. I think we got off to a good start, and we're able to address a number of important issues and special conditions should that type of use be permitted. And we have five more meetings, and I think we'll continue to make good progress and meet our deadline.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any requests from the citizens to speak to council? Written, written requests. Are we going to allow this written request? There's a, in, in the audience, there is a lady that has, is holding up a.
I couldn't get a hold of me as I was running around, so probably.
Is it, okay. Will. Is this a votable item? It's a rough crew. Can I come out there?
Hi.
Hi, Lisa.
How's everyone?
Great.
Good. My name is Lisa Heims. I'm the Director of the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to remind all of you that this Saturday evening is our Casino Royal at the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. It is our evening of a marvelous dinner, decadent gambling, just all sorts of fun up at the Royal Gorge Bridge. We do have the Royal Flush Express that is a bus that we have to shuttle people up and back, so they won't have to make the drive up and back. And ticket sales will end at the end of the day Wednesday, so I want to invite all the city council with their sweethearts to come up for a very nice evening, all to benefit PCC Fremont Campus Scholarships.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any questions of the, Lisa? Thank you. Okay. Then I'm going to open a public hearing for the application for a special event liquor permit for the BPOE, which is the Canyon City Elks Lodge. Could we have a report from the city clerk?
Members of council, this is Jeff Teeter and Shirley Gray, who's representing the Elks, local Elks clubs, who's applied for a liquor permit for Saturday, November 12th. Notice of this public hearing was given through posting the premises. This event will be from noon until midnight and will be a dinner and fundraiser for the Orchard of Hope. They will be opening their building to the Orchard of Hope, so they can host that fundraiser there. They have identified that they will carefully check IDs at the door of the event, and those of legal drinking age will be given a wristband to so indicate. The club has held similar events in the past with no resulting concerns. Many representatives from this organization has attended training in the past. Upon my review of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate fee has been submitted with the application. The diagram meets the premises, diagram of the premises meets the filing requirements, and they are in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open it up to any comments, your questions you may have of the, these two folks.
Questions of council? Mr. Smith, Ms. Smith?
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code? Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization? How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Ten. Ten, probably.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
We'll have someone at the front gate checking IDs, and at that time, anyone over the age of 21 will be given an armband. Whether they're drinking or not, they will have an armband, so everyone knows that they're over 21.
What kind of training will your volunteers get before the event?
Well, as in the past, they've had training either through a Liquor Code or the Elks Club at the Colorado state level comes around and gives training.
And I believe, Jeff, you're a little bit newer to them. They've also attended the volunteer training that we've offered here at the city, too. Shirley's probably been.
Yeah, I've been through.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your organization as well as future licensing?
Yes, we are.
Would you like to tell us some more about your event?
I am also the treasurer of the Orchard of Hope, and what we're doing is bingo for Hope. This is our third year of doing it. We raised money to help cancer victims, and all the money stays in Fremont County, and it's, we do about five events a year, and this is one of them.
What's the date again?
November 12th.
It's a Saturday night?
Mm-hmm. It's dinner, Sons of Italy. We'll be cooking sausage, sausage sandwiches, and then we'll play bingo. We have a wine grab and a silent auction.
Wow. That's worth the meal.
And it's $15 a person.
Wow. That's great. Any questions of council?
You mentioned that you were going to put a ban on everybody, and that's everybody that's over 21.
Yes.
I missed that. Thank you.
Further questions of council? Hearing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and could I hear a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the application for a special event liquor permit for BPOE Canyon City Elks Lodge.
Second.
Second, Mr. Weed? Are there any discussion on the motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number eight is Resolution Number 21 of 2016. It's a finding petition for annexation of substantial compliance of, so, of insubstantial compliance of US Highway 50 annexation. Could we have a report from staff, please? Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, at the request of our Public Works Department, CDOT, the state highway authority, has petitioned for the inclusion of a small segment of US Highway 50 into the city. As annexations happened over the years, most of the highway was annexed in, but this little stretch was left out. That causes various problems when, when there are needs to do projects and some confusion with respect to who's got law enforcement authority over the segment. So the time has come, especially in connection with the Dozier project, to just bring that piece of highway into the city. This is the first step in that process. If you find the petition to be in substantial compliance with Colorado statutes, you'll make that decision tonight. I can tell you, staff has reviewed and actually prepared the petition, and we recommend that you have what you need to make such a finding.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Is any questions from council? Mr. Meisner?
Did we do any, did we do like a flagpole, flagpole extent, annexation for the Creekside?
Creekside came in through an annexation, but, but the annexation stopped at the borderline between the highway department property and the city property on the other side of the highway.
So we obviously linked it through with some other mechanism than this.
Right. The road wasn't a key feature in, in those annexations, because there were a couple that happened where it could have been included, but it was not. And by the way, the maintenance of this stretch of highway will still be state highway's burden, not ours. We will have the same burden we've always had with respect to improvements on either side of the highway, and that's all statutorily required.
Mr. Weed? Mr. Weed?
Yeah, it's...this just occurred to me. So this is...well, this particular section of highway, who has law enfor...who currently has law enforcement authority over that piece of highway?
Technically, within the rectangle that's mapped out, the annexation parcel, it would be jurisdiction other than the city. Probably the sheriff. It's in the county.
And the reason I...
And the highway does...State Highway, Colorado Highway Patrol.
And the reason I ask this is because I believe the Canyon City Police Department has been enforcing the speed limit in that section of highway. And does that make those tickets invalid?
Depending on facts and circumstances, it might have. But I...contrary to your understanding, my understanding is we don't enforce if the violation occurred within that rectangular piece of the highway.
Did you get stopped there or something?
I mean, it's come up.
No, no, it was just...
It's the same point I had.
It was actually Rob Brown. He was at Rotary last week, and he kind of jokingly talked about getting a ticket in that area. And the police...he was talking to the police chief, and said the officer that he talked to was very nice and everything, complimented him, doing a good job. It just raises an interesting question about the status of that particular...
Again, my best information from conversations with Chief Police is we haven't enforced in that area. Now, you can be exceeding the speed limit going into that zone and coming out of that zone, and if it occurred on either side of the rectangle, it's violation C law. So I think generally, the way these tickets are written, there isn't that exactness...
Yeah, no, okay.
...in describing location. But that's part of what would be the people's burden, should the matter go to trial.
Okay. Just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, this would clarify that, because it would be taken into the city at this time. Did you have something to say, Mr. Meisner?
No.
I...sorry, thumb.
You've given Dennis a thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions of council? Hearing none. Could I have a motion in a second? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash sixteen for the annexation substantial compliance of U.S. Highway Fifty annexation.
Second.
Any discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Number nine is Appointment to the Public Arts Committee. Don Mosher and Macaro?
Marco.
Marco, whose terms would expire at twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. Could I have a report from the city administrator?
Just that we recommend the appointment of these two individuals, and hopefully you'll agree.
Are there any questions or comments of council?
I just wanted to put this on the agenda. I was asked to put it on the agenda to see whether you guys just wanted to directly appoint these folks based on their interest, their letters of interest, or emails, or if you guys wanted to interview them, as why they're on the regular agenda and not on the consent agenda.
Mr. Meisner?
Based on past history of this council, when we've had the number of applicants that equal the number of openings, we've typically appointed without interviews.
I concur.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I will then entertain a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Schumacher?
I move that we appoint Don Mosher and Marco to the Public Art Committee with terms expiring December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. It's recommended by the Public Art Committee.
Second. Mr. Meisner, second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? If none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Number ten is Ordinance Number Eighteen of Series two thousand sixteen. This is the first reading. It's an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money within the general fund for demolition of abandoned homes. I will need three to introduce this. Mr. Weed, Ms. Schumacher, Mr. Ekstrom, thank you. Could I have a report from the city administrator, please?
Yes, this will...
Let's read it by title. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Yes, I did miss that. I have my exuberance here. Would you please read it by title? I am sorry, Kathy.
It's funny. I'm sorry, Tony.
It's no problem.
This is a bill for Ordinance Number Eighteen, Series of two thousand sixteen, an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the two thousand sixteen budget year.
Thank you. Now, could you read the report?
As Mayor and council, as we have discussed on committee sessions, also individually, have an interest to address the problem of abandoned homes in Canyon City. They create a significant nuisance, deteriorate neighborhoods, and reduce property values. This is your first major initiative to address that issue. These would be the funds available to at least address three of the properties, subject to learning more about the possibility of asbestos. So we might be only doing two of them, but we'll have more information on that. But this will be a good start, and more importantly, send a message to other property owners to please tend to their properties, take pride in their properties, and improve the visual and aesthetic quality of the community.
Any questions?
Comment?
Mr. Meisner?
I think we at least need to recognize that this whole process kind of started as a result of the open session before council?
Right.
With a citizen complaint or concern, and that citizen being involved in the whole process, and her in conjunction with Councilman Smith, Terry, a bunch of council staff that actually got this whole ball rolling, and are actually doing something. So I congratulate all those people.
That group included the fire chief. We also consulted with the police department as well, and code enforcement.
Who's the citizen that we had that...
Donna Young.
Donna Young. So she really needs to be committed in terms of bringing an issue to council and us saying, you know, get involved. And she did. She got involved and is working with that whole group.
Yeah. Great. Any comments?
I have a question. Tony, what is the status on looking at those three homes that we wanted to demolish? Where are we at?
Well, the final step is to determine what asbestos exists at each of the properties, because that could have a significant impact on the cost of demolition. So we don't have the results yet. I hope we'll get them in the next month, and that will dictate, again, whether we do one, two, or three homes. But I hope at least two homes can be taken down.
If I may, let me add a little bit to this. At least one of the property owners appears to be willing to convey her property to the city, which would cut out a lot of uncertainty and procedural, do process things we otherwise would have to do. So we've got a good prime first candidate if we understand the owner's intentions correctly, and I think we do. So you may see some actual proof on the ground that the program's beginning to take hold. The corner of Tenth and Rudd is the first corner that might be conquered through the use of these funds.
Mr. Gill?
Mr. O'Rourke, I understand that on these properties that might not be conveyed to the city, that the...that there will be a lien put on the property, so that the citizens of Canyon City can recoup the money for the cost of the demolition. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes. It's not an uncomplicated legal process, but it is one where the citizens can claw back the cost of the demolition. And so we can be assured of being able to continue this program. But I think both the mayor and Councilmember Ashley Smith were right in creating a process, not wanting simply to demolish homes, but to send a message through this action to warn people that this could be the outcome of not taking care of your property. And we originally had thirty-seven homes on this list. A number of those homes are being worked on today, I think, because of the actions that this group, and particularly Councilmember Smith and the mayor, have vocalized. So that's really the most important message, is take pride in your property, take care of your business, and improve your neighborhoods.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add to that, is, okay, Mr. Mayor, that in our citizen survey, it said that the satisfaction of our citizens for code enforcement is only seventeen percent. Seventy-four percent have observed code violations, and sixty-one percent think that we are...have cleanliness as a city. So I think that really shows that there is a clear desire, and almost top of the list, that we need to take care of our code enforcement better. And accomplishing these homes is a first start to that. We've mentioned this committee, and we've actu...this is just one prong of many that needs to be done to clean up our city. And as we saw, it's quite costly. Originally, we wanted to do four houses. Now we're down to three. Might even be down to two because of asbestos. And so I would like to encourage council, in part of our committee meetings, we also had UCAG there and Autumn Dever there, who has a lot of experience in implementing...writing and implementing grants for a community. We had talked about seeking grants, and that might be something that we might want to reconsider, being a little bit proactive in seeking this grant money, because we can't always put up forty-eight thousand dollars and eventually recoup those costs as a lien as a city. Monta Vista did their grant money. They got about ten thousand dollars per home that they demolished. And that will help considerably, especially when asbestos isn't the case. Autumn Dever at UCAG is willing to write and administer this grant. And for a point, this grant would be for demolition. And a part of that demolition is that also not only you'd go to the citizens and then say, this is a problem. You have a dangerous building that needs to be torn down. You...we can help you with ten...up to ten thousand dollars through this grant money. And if you resell your home within five years to somebody that has eighty percent of the median income of our community, then that grant money will pay for that portion, and you won't be responsible for it, which is a two-prong benefit, because we have a real severe lack of income for lower households. And this provides an opportunity for people with a little bit lower income to be able to own a home and take care of this home well. And so I would like to see this maybe pursue the...if you're...with your approval, move forward on that. Already, what we have through UCAG is another grant program where homes that don't need to be torn down can get some grant money to fix the home back up and resell it for the same reason at a lower income...to a lower-income family. So that's already there and available. And that's just another part of this prong of helping to increase our code enforcement. Another prong will be that we'll be hiring another code enforcement officer, because we have quite a bit of violations that needs to be a little bit more clean...you know, a little bit more supervised, I guess, to do. Does that...so anyway, that's where we're at. Forty-eight thousand is a beginning, but there's so much more. As we said, we have thirty-seven homes that need to be torn down.
Well, thank you all. And that committee continues to meet, right?
Um, yeah, it does. We haven't met for a while, because we've been kind of on a standstill, waiting for our...a stamp of approval.
Right.
And that's been a really big deal, because in the past, code enforcement hasn't felt necessarily that they had city council support to really go to citizens and say, this, you really got to do this. And so now, we have city council behind them. We need to get our local municipality judge behind us as well, and they'll keep moving forward.
Yeah, and we've also seen that because of just the word of mouth has gotten out in letters, the people have cleaned up, started, jumped on it, and they saw that we're serious. And we are. It ruins neighborhoods to have these homes falling apart or boarded up or half burnt down. We don't need that.
Yeah, we had some homes that were board...completely boarded up, and now they've been...since they've gotten their letter in the mail saying that they needed to fix their homes up, some owners have said, I don't want to deal with this. They've sold it to a new, proudful owner and have painted it with flowers in the front, and it's been great. And having the market start to move again has helped a lot as well.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, thank you all. Okay. Hearing that, could we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Ordinance Number Eighteen, Series of two thousand sixteen, to appropriate additional sums of money for demolition of abandoned homes of forty...forty-eight thousand dollars.
Mr. Meisner, second. Are there any discussion further on that motion? Hearing none. Would you call a roll, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay. Ordinance Number Eleven is Ordinance Number Nineteen of Series two thousand sixteen. It is the first reading. It's an ordinance to ref...in refinancing the water treatment plant. Prior to introduction, could we have a staff report on the changes, please?
The critical change was the net interest cost would be two-point-five percent rather than three. This is a matter of a refunding and refinancing of a two-thousand-and-eight certificates of participation of twelve and a half million dollars for improvements of the water treatment facility. Given the current interest rate market, it's in the interests of the city and the taxpayers to refinance this debt, and in doing so, we will probably save at least one million dollars, which in turn will be reinvested in utility improvements for the community.
Mr. Havens?
Let me add to that. I think you all received a written document that reflects the exact change. We're striking three percent and replacing it with two-point-five percent per rent tax exempt, or three-point-eight-five percent taxable. So one figure replaced by a range that includes two figures. Otherwise, no need to amend any further.
Okay. I will need three to introduce. Mr. Meisner, Mr. Gill, Ms. Smith, thank you. Could I have a report from the city administrator, please? Or that is a report? You just gave your report, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But if you'd like to hear it again, I can give it again.
I thought I liked it the first time, so thank you. Could...could you go ahead and read it by title, please?
This is a bill for Ordinance Number Nineteen, Series of two thousand sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery by the city, acting by and through its water activity enterprise of a site lease agreement, a lease purchase agreement, and related documents concerning the leasing of the water treatment facility to finance and refinance certain improvements thereto, ratifying action previously taken, and providing other matters.
Okay. Could we now have a motion and a second? Mr. Weed?
May I, members of council, make the motion to approve Ordinance Number Nineteen, Series of two thousand sixteen, on first reading?
Second.
Ms. Schumacher, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing...Ms. Smith?
Tony, am I right in this refinancing that'll help set up our water department to be better prepared if our one percent sales tax passes, that they'll be able to fix water pipes under the streets as we repair our streets? Is that...
Yes. And that is one of the chief benefits of this refinancing, is to allow us to use the proceeds for utility line improvements in our proposed street repairs, should two-way pass.
So this is a really important part of the case for the one percent sales tax, in that the one percent can only go to actual reconstruction and repair. We...that money that would be raised through two-way can't even be used to fix water pipes under the street. And so this is important, as other fu...the city will have to do a number of other funding to take care of collateral costs that will come with it, such as pipes under the street. And this is one example of how we are setting up our budget and being prepared for those additional costs that'll be incurred in our...in our general budget every year.
Mr. Weed?
Yeah. Ashley took away a lot of what I was going to say, but I would like to commend our finance director, Harry Patel, for taking advantage of an opportunity, taking obligation, and that we...that we were going to end up paying regardless, and squeeze a million dollars out of it at no extra cost. And like Ashley was saying, that's going to give us the opportunity, should two-way pass, to keep ahead of the road reconstruction with the underground utilities improvements that we had not had funds for. And none of the two-way money can be used for that. So I mean, this is a real key part, and the timing is excellent, so...
Thank you, Mr. Weed.
I was just going to add to that, part of what Dennis just said. No extra cost whatsoever to the city. There'll be approximately one million net free money, which will go to the water department for its enterprises. And there'll be no additional time to pay off the debt. So we're staying within the original timing. We're saving a million dollars, and we're achieving that through finding interest rates using a single investor and as opposed to the public and that array of investors as the purchaser of the refinanced cops.
[laughter]
So it's, it's one of those win-win things that happens now and then, and tonight, you'll get the ball rolling toward a closing that should occur within the next month or two.
Any other discussion? Could I have a motion in a second? Well, we've had that, sorry. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, then we have eliminated steps 12 and 13 on your agenda, and at this time, then, we have a personal matter. We will adjourn to, pardon, Mr. Meisner?
Sorry.
What are you doing?
Mayor and council, I think I have this right. I'm going to move, I'm going to move that council go into accession, move that council go into executive session in accordance with section 26, 24-6-4024F of the Colorado Revised Statutes for the Purposes of Discussing the Personnel Matter in Regard to Municipal Judge. No action is expected to follow this executive session.
Second.
Call a roll. Can we do that?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Shall we adjourn to that?